According.
Okay, so being Wednesday, September 15th at 6:30, I'll open the planning board meeting. Have inquiry. I'll just once again read in the governor's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law 30A, section 18, the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting is being, this meeting of the Bridgewater Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of the members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. This meeting is being recorded and within 48 hours, we will post the link of the recording on town's website and or other town's social media pages. The following members of the Bridgewater Planning Board are participating remotely. I'm Patrick Frisco, the chair, Mr. Michael McDonald, the vice chair, Mr. Raymond Agemian, Mr. Gene Greenough, the clerk, and Mr. Stephen Geller. During the meeting, all votes will be taken as roll call votes. The Bridgewater following, the following Bridgewater town staff will also be participating remotely. Mrs. Jennifer DeBogren, the community and economic development director. And Mrs. Jasmine Ferronachi, the assistant town planner. We also have two associate members, I believe. Astrid is not joining us, is she on?
Correct, she will not be able to join this evening.
And then Julia, Julia Santacangelo. Is that it for the staff, right?
Mr. Solari is on, I'm not sure if he's just observing or?
Mr. Stephen Solari, who's the building commissioner. So at this time, everyone's mic is muted. The board's mics will be unmuted through the whole meeting. As items appear on the agenda, the project representatives' mics may be unmuted. If the project is a public hearing and the public allows a public comment, we ask that you use your chat feature to ask your question by listing your name and address and your question. The host, which is Mrs. DeBogren, will recognize all questions in order. You can also use the raise my hand feature in the participant menu and you'll be unmuted when the chair recognizes you. Again, please state your name and address before stating a question. If you're on the phone, you may dial star nine to raise your hands. So we have two public hearings this evening. The first one on the agenda is for Saridum Way. This is a definitive subdivision off of High Street. We received a continuation request yesterday from SEA Associates to the planning board, 65 Central Square, Bridgewater, Mass. On behalf of our client, Silver Engineering Associates would like to request a continuation of the meeting scheduled for September 15th to the scheduled meeting on October 6, 2021. SEA also requests an extension for 30 days to allow the board to complete their review of all revised plans that will be submitted prior to the meeting. Also to be submitted will be the signed agreement to allow for the grading onto the adjoining lot on Copperfield Drive. Sincerely Lawrence P. Silva, P E S C, President of SEA Engineering. So we opened that public hearing for Saridum Way. We received the continuation request until October 6th. Do we have any board discussion on that? Do we have a motion to accept the continuation request to October 6, 2021?
No, moved.
All right, Mr. McDonald, do we have a second?
Okay.
Was that Mr. Agemian?
Yeah, it's me.
Second by Mr. Agemian. Any discussion on the board? Okay, I'll take the roll call. Mr. Geller?
Mr. Geller is not here this evening.
Oh, he's not here? I'm sorry. I said he was. I'm sorry. So Mr. Geller is not here. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenough?
Yes.
Mr. Agemian?
Yes.
I mean, yes, okay. The next public hearing that we have for this evening at 6:30 is the joint hearing with the Community and Economic Development Committee. This is the zoning application. Mr. Chase, did you have anybody join you yet?
I have expected that Counselor Colobodus would be with us. I've sent him a text message and not received a reply. So I don't know more about his whereabouts or ability to participate tonight.
So we're just looking to continue this anyway, correct? Mrs. DeBogren?
That's correct. Two reasons. One at the, tonight is the, is the Jewish observance of Yom Kippur and some residents have expressed a wish that we continue it so that they could be here this evening when they would be at rather, not rather, but they have to be at home to celebrate, to observe the holiday. And then also at our last workshop with Attorney Bobrowski, the board and the Community and Economic Development Committee, I believe indicated a desire to continue some workshopping to review the ordinance and make some additional maybe changes potentially. And come back with a more robust, complete version in the workshop setting prior to holding the hearing. So you could, so in order to do that, you could do one of two things. You could continue it out a few months to do that, have that process unfold, or you could simply close your hearing and have it go back to the council with no recommendation and then we could just resubmit a new ordinance once we've workshopped all these changes. So you could do one of the two things.
Mr. Chase, do you have preference?
I tend to think that it may be preferable to not make a recommendation as Jennifer has just indicated and return it to the council and allow a new ordinance to be compiled. Are there thoughts on that?
Yeah, I have a thought. I mean, I don't quite understand why we have to need new ordinance. Why don't we just continue the workshops?
Well, you would continue the workshops since you're a junior, but either way, a new ordinance is going to have to go back before the full council for first reading and then come back to this group for a hearing. And so I'm just thinking instead of keeping this hearing open, because this hearing is on a specific ordinance that's already been presented. If we continue to workshop and make changes to that ordinance, that will, that won't be, that will be not prudent in front of you anymore. So my thought is close that hearing because we know that ordinance is not what you want to see move forward and you want to workshop it and get something different. And then present your recommendations as a group back to the council for a new ordinance that will then come back to you for a hearing.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm still not sure what's going on here. I mean, if, if, if Yom Kippur was not an issue tonight, we'd be doing a workshop, correct?
No, we would, no, we would not be doing a workshop tonight.
This is the, we wanted to get a couple of workshops in before this public hearing, but we only got one. But we had pushed this public hearing to September 15th. So we still want to do some more workshops and ultimately we're probably going to end up amending what came to us originally. So one of the benefits I see by closing it is that people that are interested are not going to lose track of it. It'll actually be re-advertized.
So in effect, Pat, we're going to be starting all over again, correct?
I don't think, no, I think, I think we're moving forward with the workshops. I think we're going to rewrite it anyway. So I think it's, I think the workshops are good. And I think a lot of good has already come out of the workshops. I think that we should. Either, either way, I think it's, it's either, either way, I think we're going to end up going back with a different version of it anyway, Ray. So I think it's going to be, have to be re-advertized anyway. So I think we're probably best off to schedule another workshop, but, but stop the, but, but stop this public hearing. If that makes sense.
I'm sure it makes sense in terms of how things are done in a democracy, but in terms of just getting things done now, it doesn't make sense to me. It seems, it just shows the how, how difficult it is to sometimes get something done when you have a group of people. I don't, I just, we started this, what, two years ago? We're still talking about another ordinance again? I just don't get it.
I think, I think it's going to be the same ordinance. I think there are tweaks that we probably want to make to it. You know, make it comply.
I'm happy to do, if the board would prefer just to continue these, this hearing out to, I would suggest at least two months out so that we have time to schedule a new workshop. I'm happy to do that if that's the board's preference. And the, and the council's preference.
So let's just talk about it real quick. It's going to have to be re-advertized anyway, correct?
Depending on what changes are proposed, but based on our first workshop, I would say that's likely.
Right, so. I think we're going to end up closing it eventually anyway and re-advertising it, but would, Ray, do you feel more comfortable just continuing it or?
I don't understand why we can, can't continue workshops within the next couple, three weeks. I mean, I just don't get this, you know, just.
Oh, I, I think, I think we planned, I saw there's two different things. I think we planned to continue the workshops. So the workshops are not going to stop. It's just, it's just the final vote on it. We, we were not ready to take it. We're not ready to continue discussing it in the public forum until we, until we have the revisions.
That's fine. Whatever, whatever you think is best.
Any other board comments or?
I have no preference either way.
And with respect to the present ordinance, if we make changes, then we say no to this ordinance. And that's why a new ordinance has to come out with what we wanted. Is that right?
Yeah, it's just the process. So they sent us something, brought up or down. I mean, personally, I couldn't vote for it the way it is. I want to see some changes. So we'd have to give a negative recommendation. And then the council would have to start all over again anyway, or vote it with a vote for it or against it. We don't want them to vote against it. So I think the point of the workshops is to try to work out the bugs. Even though we've been working on it for two years, that, you know, the council, some of the council members, it's the first time they started at the last workshop. We, we were asked to get comments back by last Wednesday from Mark Bobrowski. Hopefully, you know, over the next week or so, somebody's taken those comments and incorporating, incorporating them into the, the draft and then we can move forward. So I, I think either way, whether we continue it out to, to, to November 17th, I think is our second meeting in November. Or whether we close it and re-advertise it, I think ultimately it's going to be re-advertized anyway. So it's, it doesn't matter to me. Mr. Chase, would you be open to just moving it out to 1117 just to keep it on track? I mean, that's.
I think if, if you think that's more helpful, yes. I, I have no, you know, burning desire to go in either direction in particular. So I would say that's fine as well.
I think, I think one thing that Mr. Agemian made a good point about was that if we don't keep it on the schedule, we've been working on it so long, it's never going to get done. Maybe if we keep it on the schedule to 1117, if we're not ready, then we can always continue it. I mean, at least it's on the schedule and still moving forward.
I, I see. I agree with that.
Is the board comfortable with that?
Works for me.
Yep.
Mr. Agemian? Is that, is that our second meeting? I'm just looking at a regular calendar in front of me and I see that's two months.
Yep, that's your second meeting in November.
That's not Thanksgiving week of?
No, it's the week before Thanksgiving.
So on the planning board side, do we have our motion to continue this public hearing to 1117 at 6:30?
I'll make a motion to continue this public hearing till November 17th at 6:30.
I'll second.
So by gene, second by?
Michael.
Okay, I'll, I'll take the roll call. Mr. Agemian?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenough?
Yes.
I mean, yes. So, Mr. Chase, do you have a second person there yet?
I'm sorry, do I have a second?
A second council overdue or not yet?
No, I, um, let me check the attendance. I don't.
I don't see him.
I would, I would imagine that. I mean, it's, it's continued.
Yeah, there's no quorum. So we would just say that the meeting's been continued till November 17th for the council as well.
So Mr. Chase, I don't think you need to vote yet?
No.
No, he can't. There's no quorum. He can't even open his meeting.
We continue it to the 17th.
That sounds fine.
And then I will reach out to the board and the committee members when I get Mark Bobrowski scheduled for another workshop session, if that works for everybody.
I think that's good.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda, we have Goldfield Estates, Attorney Castaneda with us this evening.
Yes, I'm, I'm here.
Florence Jones, Attorney Castaneda.
So as you know, we had had the issue pertaining to the parking spaces on the, what had been a shared parcel with the mailbox, the central mail delivery area, which we then in, in, in concert with, with you, with your request, it severed off that parcel and created a more fluid and workable parking area. And, and the homeowner who directly abuts the backside of the parking area had asked, and we, we had it staked so that you could, you, all, all the members could go out and do it. We had it staked and asked if, that, you know, rather than take trees down simply to replace them with abreviades, if we could do something to preserve those trees. So this plan shows our engineer, Evan Watson, had gone out there and to physically inspect it and based on his measurements using the GPS, the three spaces to the far inside of the parking lot. If, which would, which would allow for eight spaces to remain, and I, I believe that was consistent with what the, the last conversation was that the planning board felt was an adequate number of spaces. That would preserve the, that existing tree line and leave enough space to mix some, the, the abreviades along the, the, the front of that tree line. So the, so the Xs on that, those back three spaces would be losing those three spaces to preserve the existing mature trees. There's, I, I don't know if, if all of you had gotten out there to see it, but there's some, some scrub and there's a couple of dead trees and so we would have planned to remove that anyway. So that, that stuff would still be taken out, but, but the existing mature trees that are healthy and, and, you know, essentially flow from his backyard would be preserved based on this layout.
Board feedback for Attorney Castaneda? And just so everybody's clear, this is not the hearing. This is just kind of an informal before you file the minor modification, correct?
This would just be with a, an A and R plan to re, re, reconfigure it and, and be dealt with under the original modification that, that we had submitted. For draining.
If I recall, if I recall, we separated the gravel parking lot out from the drainage modification, correct?
I believe the drainage modification was already approved.
Correct, but, but I think the way we did it was just to keep it moving, we approved the drainage modification itself, but.
We did, we did as a major modification. I believe we discussed whether or not this could be treated as a mine modification.
But this is not the minor modification. This is just, you want to know what in favor of this.
I would do that by way of a, a letter specifically requesting it with a more formal plan, correct? This is, this is essentially for discussion purposes at this point to determine if you, if you as, as, as a board feel that this is an appropriate means of addressing this, the, the issue of, of Civ, which, which really what it came down to was the number of parking spaces and saving those, those trees in that homeowner's backyard.
So, okay. Would the board like to provide any feedback favorable or negative to Attorney Castaneda?
I believe that I have already said that I have no problem decreasing number of parking spaces. So it goes to eight. It's fine with me. And if it is, if the neighbors feel that this is a better setup than it was originally planned, then I have no problem with it.
I find this to be an acceptable compromise.
And keeping trees that are there, good.
Julia, Julia, any comments?
Oh, I think it's definitely makes sense, especially if the abutters are for it. And saving trees that are healthy.
Good. No, I'm happy to see the parking lot stay and I'm, I, I think adding the trees and reducing the parking lot and I think keeping them mature trees makes sense. So I'm okay with it as well.
Okay. So I'll, I'll get this plan, as I said, prepared in, in a more appropriate fashion for, for actual submission with a, with a request for a minor modification. And in conjunction with that, we'll submit the A and R plan to create the, the, this parcel properly as well as sever off the central mail delivery area as it's shown on this plan.
And I know, and I don't know if we want to do this or not, but have you spoken to the abutters about this, Attorney Castaneda, at all or?
Uh, not, not yet, but before we submit the actual request for the modification, I certainly intend to.
If we do a minor modification, it's not a notification, but maybe the.
No, we, I, I had promised when, in that last hearing, I had promised all of those homeowners that if we do a modification, that we will be responsible for making them all aware of the hearing gate and we will do that.
You know, trying to scrap the process. So, all right. Any other board feedback? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
You too.
The next public hearing we have is 1025 Elm Street. This is a request for a minor modification. This is the lodge, I think it was the Bartello Company built this 350,000 square foot warehouse.
Can you hit to represent the applicant?
I believe it's actually Mr. Paul Gerlach is here.
That's correct. Yeah, I'm an architect for the project.
Florence Jones, so go ahead.
There was a, and then Jasmine, I don't know if there's, if you had any type of visual. So there, this is all pertaining to the remote parking lot that's in the upper right corner there. The original layout and design of the space, it, it, it takes the, it took up the, that entire area that you can see kind of in, in white there, just the and that just ended up being too much space that, that just wasn't needed for, for the parking needs for our clients. So we were just reducing the, reducing the parking in that area, just the actual paved space. And we had Silver Engineering was, was the civil engineer that designed the original lot. We had them update their grading plan and any of the stormwater clogs and this is just a just a reduction in parking in this area.
So I have a question. So it looks like the existing, the approved plan that we had showed a couple of drainage basins on either side of that parking lot. Are those still being constructed?
Those are existing at this point. Yeah, all of the, all of the, even along the driveway there, the existing detention ponds that are a little bit plant south. And then there's, there's quite a few detention ponds all the way around there. Those were all already built and this is just, this is just the design is just to pave half of that lot instead of the whole, the whole lot.
All the stormwater management is in and then inspected and approved by the D W Director and they've received their sign off with their as-built for their site work.
And this, and this, and Mr. Silva's original calculations, this was designed for pavement?
That's correct.
And then if they wanted to expand to use that additional piece up, that would require another modification because they're essentially taking that off the table now.
That's correct.
Okay. Board questions?
Has Zou commented on this?
He has not commented on this specifically because it's a minor modification. He reviewed the as-built when the stormwater management was approved and he, I believe he looked at this, went to conservation commission for new or modifications, the order of conditions. And I believe he commented on it at that time.
When was this determined to be a minor modification?
We haven't yet.
Well, they requested that you determine to be a minor modification. That's why we haven't.
No, it hasn't been determined. We haven't, we haven't decided that yet.
Right. So that's why we have not sent it out for review. Because we don't do that until it's determined to be a major modification.
So that remaining area in white, that's going to be gravel, it's going to be grass now. What is that going to be?
It is, it is gravel. Yeah, the, the existing, the existing condition now is a of a, a fully prepped for asphalt. It's just a.
So it's just, you're not going to asphalt it at this time?
Correct.
Will it be utilized or could it be utilized for parking?
Uh, no, we actually have guard rails. It's, it's a little hard to see that dash line, but we're, we're installing guardrails all along the, yeah, just there so they can't pull through.
So that'll be a, so there's, there won't be cars parking on surfaces that don't, don't have catch basins and things like that that would be able to treat oil going into the ground and things like that. Is that correct? So there, there won't be any parking then, correct?
Correct, yeah, that's.
Yeah, blocked off.
And a planning question, zoning question, it still meets the required packing. We recalculated the the parking calculations. How about if that looks like it was truck parking at one point that, that still meet the loading number?
That's very excessive, their loading and their parking requirement.
I apologize.
Does anybody, any board questions?
My only comment again is, I mean, this looks like an actual improvement to the site, but it's difficult for me to, to agree to it without some comment from town engineer. I mean, whether it's minor or major, it's, it's, it determines what's going to determine it is the drainage. Whether this affected on the surfaces, it shouldn't affect drainage, but we don't know that without some sort of expertise here.
So, so just the staff, Mr. Antonero has not provided any comment in writing?
No, correct. That's not, I don't typically send these requests to Mr. Itinero because there's been no fees submitted for their engineer review at this point. So I don't submit it as there's no, there's no fee for that. There's, that's not part of this process.
Right, but I think, I think to Mr. Agemian, he could at least confirm that everything's in and signed off on and, and this is not going to have any adverse impacts to the drainage. I mean, to me, like I, I agree with Mr. Agemian, less pavement's better, but are there any adverse impacts to the drainage by leaving that of the section gravel? And could there be, you know, sediment flow into those? Into those, you know, storm drains, et cetera. Is that, because I think it was designed based on pavement, correct?
Correct. It's designed for pavement, but typically you can over-design something and not pave it.
Correct, but I guess my, my only question is, is by not paving it, are there any adverse impacts in the drainage system?
And this, and this was updated by, by Silver Engineering. So this was, we, we had pulled them in as a consultant to redo their, they had their originally approved civil drawings and they just happened to not pave this in, in. It was all designed for that and then we had them update that design. So I believe that was all approved. So I believe that was all approved.
Is is this holding anything up right now at this point, or or no?
Uh, it 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 is, yeah, it's we're we're coming up against the uh the uh window for asphalt.
But my question is, is if we did it uh next me, if we had had Mister Antonero look at it and just say there's no adverse impacts to drainage. And voted at our next meeting, would that be sufficient time or not?
I I believe that would be a a a pretty big issue, just I I I don't know when the asphalt plants are closing in the area, uh, but that was a huge concern of our GC.
Is there any way to get Mister Antonero on? With us now?
Um, I don't believe he's available this evening, I think he had a personal commitment, I spoke with him earlier today, but I can try texting.
But if we had to, could we condition the approval of the modification such that it would undergo a review by the town engineer after the fact, and if additional drainage mitigation was needed, or if it was determined that. Uh, that that space should be paved to comply with the uh the drainage, we can we do something like that? We if we yeah, if we have to?
Chairman, um. First of all, uh, my understanding is that asphalt plants, they open right into November and even later. At least I remember them doing that, because I knew somebody worked on that. Uh, but secondly, the main thing is uh we're subverting the process here. I think town engineer needs to give a response whether this this change, which looks to be positive, is going to have adverse effects. Now, I don't see how we can deal with it tonight. Without his his uh. Comments.
And I apologize if I don't know the process, so when when we sent this in as a revision um to our our building permit, it does it, does it not get routed through to to who you're talking about, the engineering?
Typically, our process is if you're requesting a minor modification, we don't submit it to engineering for review because that's. Um, a major modification that requires a set of fees to pay for the review. And the board would have to make that determination, and that would be a public hearing and a whole separate process, so it does not get that reviewed at that level.
But but I think Mister Jemmy's point is that, to me, it's a good thing, and I I'd vote for it if. I I just wanna, I guess, I guess.
Believe it, I believe Mister Engineer just joined.
He did.
Uh, but he doesn't have audio. Maybe he does have.
So he reviewed this for Concom, already?
I he ma- I think he might have, I don't, I'm not a hundred percent positive, but. Azu, if you can unmute yourself.
Yeah, I think I'm. Yeah, good evening.
So, Mister, are we, I don't know if you can see the screen, can you see the screen?
Yes, sir.
So, for us, we have a modification request. Which on the surface appears to just be a simple reduction of asphalt.
Yeah.
And all the drainage structures, we were told, are already installed.
Yeah.
And I guess the questions that we have. Are there any adverse effects to the drainage system? Whether it be sediment runoff, et cetera, from the remaining gravel area? That we should be concerned with, or is this a good thing to have less asphalt, and? It seems they uh pu- putting a mitigated measure in place to not allow cast to pack on that unless it's paved, so. Have you seen this? Do you have any comments on it? Are there any potential adverse effects to the drainage?
No, because the last time, Mister Chairman, the last time that they came before us. Was they were gonna pave the US section that was included in their calculations. Uh, regarding our drainage, and so the reduction of uh, if anything. This drainage system is already being installed, it was inspected, and it's been as-built, they've done the as-built pla- uh for it. So, I don't see any concern, and I believe that our with the uh. Mechanisms they have in place, I see no problem with the drainage. They actually, so if if anything, the drainage will be over-designed. And if they ev- if they eventually pave it, then it will be, it would have been what was allowed, so I don't see any problem with it.
Mister Jemmy?
That's fine with me, um, but I do think in the future, if something like this comes up. It should come up before us, whether it's a minor or major modification first.
That's what it's here for, Mister.
And then, let me finish, and then we determine if it's um. A major, if we think it might be major, then it goes to to be evaluated.
That's the process that we take at the moment.
That is the process that it's here for this evening.
But but I also think Mister Jemmy's point is like, if it's if it is a simple reduction, if we could just have a comment from the town engineer saying that. It's a simple reduction, there's no adverse effects, that would be helpful as well. Because that helps us make a decision whether it's major or minor, so.
Well, Mister Chairman, I uh, I uh, I would, it could our sentiment, except that if you recall, there were before the board before. And we actually had it there, uh, as well as before the conservation commission. We had it continued, just so that I could take a look at the uh original drainage plan, consistent with what they are proposing. So, you've already had a a bite of the apple, it was just uh, and as well as the conservation commission. So they are doing what they're supposed to do. And uh, I did chime in, and I did a producer, um. Um, I believe I produced an email at the time, saying that as long as they take care of our um. Uh, as lo- as far as the drainage is consistent, that I'll be fine, and they've demonstrated that, so I don't see any issue with it.
Well, that was the orig- are you talking the original approval or a modification? Because I've never seen any of that for a modification.
They had gone before the conservation commission first.
Right, but we never saw any of that.
So. That's why they're before you, I guess, to uh see if you would ever concur with the uh findings of the conservation commission.
Alright. Well, until now, I didn't know the findings of the conservation commission, so.
Now you do, now you do.
Alright. Um, alright, so we have a board comments or questions?
I just wanna uh, I'm I'm, you know, stressing this, I I have no problem with this now that Mister Antonero is is on this call. I just, I just had the 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 feeling that we were in a sense being asked to approve this as a minor modification. On the assumption that since reducing the the number of the amount of asphalt, it's gonna be fine, and I I'm I'm happy with that. I just wanna have some process here where the town engineer has a has an okay to this, that's all.
Okay, I think of uh, I think of uh, probably the um applicant's engineer. Should have done a concurrent of filing uh with the Concom and planning board. But be that as it may, uh, I think of uh, right now, and it's it it's really not of a. In my mind, Mister Chairman and and Mister Jemian, uh, I wouldn't totally fault the applicant because they. They tried to do the conservation first, because that is also involves the DEP, so.
No, I know, but I guess we just had that comment, that's all, hey, went through Concom, we're okay with it, there's no issues with the drainage, you would have made it a lot easier, so.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, thank you, alright, thank you, signing off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a um, any more discussion with the applicant on this? Application, and if not, do we have a motion to either make it a major or minor modification?
I'll make the motion, and it might be a minor modification.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
And Mrs. Greenham, any board discussion? Daring now, I'll take the roll call, Mister McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenham?
Yes.
Mister Jemian?
Yes.
I mean, yes. Um, so. Do we have, do we have to take a motion to approve the minor modification, or did that handle it?
No, we still need to.
So do we have a motion to approve the minor modification?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Jemmy, by Mister McDonald's second, any discussion? Mrs. Greenham?
Yes.
Mister Jemmy?
Yes.
Mister McDonald?
Yes.
No, that's.
Oh.
Alright, um. Next on the agenda, we have, I think just minutes, correct?
We were holding those, Mrs. Debo brand for our next meeting.
That's correct, we're holding all minutes until your next meeting.
Alright, so I I have some comments on the August eighteenth one.
You just put them in writing and send them to my office.
Alright, do we have a motion to adjourn?
To move. Make a motion to adjourn.
Sorry, Mister. I apologize, there's just a number of people that came on after, would you mind just reminding people when Seridam Way was continued, I believe that's what some people are on here for?
Alright, so for anybody on, so it's early around this evening, we had two public hearings scheduled, both continued. Seridam Way, we continued until October sixth, at our meeting at six thirty. And the joint hearing of the Community Economic Development Committee continued until November seventeenth at six thirty. So who made the motion to adjourn?
I did.
Hi, Mrs. Greenham, who made the second?
I did.
Mister Jemian? So I'll take the roll. Mrs. Greenham?
Yes.
Yes.
Mister Jemian?
Yes.
And I mean, yes. Thank you, everybody, good night.
That's good one, everyone.